Hey, it's Ryan with the Bluffton Buzz. Thanks for joining us on a special elections, special edition of the Bluffton Buzz. Let me get that out right. Emily Mayer, nice to meet you, ma'am. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm very good, I'm very good. Thanks for joining me. Not as cold as it has been recently, but it's rainy. So if it starts raining too hard, we've already decided we're going back to the playground and we're gonna finish the rest of the interview over by the slide, okay? So let's try to get this done in an effective manner and stay dry. So Emily, tell me a little bit about where you're from and how you ended up here in Bluffton.
Yeah, so before I came to Bluffton, we were in New Jersey. I went to New Jersey for college, stayed there to teach a little bit before coming here, but moved a whole lot growing up. My dad's in the clergy, so he was moving pulpits. We would go up and down the East Coast. So I was born in Virginia. We spent some time in Connecticut, but my family has spent the most, the majority of their time right outside DC and Maryland.
Okay, cool. And when did you move to Bluffton and how did you get here?
So we bought our house in 2020, but didn't get to move into it until 2021. But we came down because of COVID. I was teaching at the time in New Jersey and my husband and I were living in a tiny little apartment. And both of us trying to work remotely in a 900 square foot apartment was not ideal. My students were like, "I can hear his phone call." So I was like, "All right, all right." So my in-laws had a place on the island. My father-in-law's a doctor, so obviously he was very busy during COVID. So we were like, "Hey, can we use your space? Get a little outdoor time, have a little more room to spread out." So we drove through the middle of the night to Hilton Head in March of 2020. And the rest is history. Found Bluffton, fell in love with it, decided we could never leave.
Okay, so March of 2020, you're coming up on four years here.
It's hard to believe, yeah.
Yeah, it happens quick. It happens really quick. I'm not too, not too much further on you and how long I've been here, but it's just mind-blowing how fast time goes by when you settle in here. So now you are a teacher still?
No, I don't teach anymore. I work for a political consulting company. So we do a little bit of everything. I've helped candidates run campaigns. I've helped recruit candidates. I do a lot of like data, research work for races that may be winnable, but I've never had somebody, you know, compete in the election before. And then there's also some lobbying work that goes with that. So I spent some time up at the State House in Columbia as well.
Wow, so this is your game.
Sort of, sort of, yeah.
You do it for other people. We were talking about this before we recorded. It's, you do it for other folks, but sometimes it's a little weird to do stuff like that for yourself.
Yeah, I don't think, you know, it's good perspective, no matter what the outcome is. Now, at least when I'm talking with other candidates in the future, I can bring that, "Okay, I know that this is gonna be more difficult than how I'm describing it to you right now." Without that experience, I was like, "Oh yeah, just go do these things." Like, it's no big deal. And now I'm doing them and I'm like, "Oh, that's much harder than I gave anybody any credit for." It's awkward stepping in front of the curtain and being, being the one in front and running the show as opposed to behind the curtain. But I'm having a blast. It's really fun.
Good. Have you been doing a lot of campaigning and visits and stuff like that?
Yeah, I've been doing, I've been meeting a lot of folks in their neighborhoods at their doors this weekend in the freezing cold. My eight-month-old came along with me, all bundled up. I was wearing her. And we've been knocking on doors, meeting neighbors, phone calls in the communities that you can't get into, right? But just a lot of great one-on-one conversation with folks. And I think taking that time to really give personalized attention has really resonated. They've really appreciated, you know, the effort that I've been putting in. So it's been great getting to know people.
Good. So you got an eight-month-old? Any other kids?
I have a two-year-old.
And a two-year-old? Okay. I got a three-and-a-half and a three-and-a-half-month-old right now.
So you understand the chaos, yes.
It's nutty, so I can imagine bringing the kids around and campaigning at the same time.
There's a reason the two-year-old can't really come with me. She has too much of her own opinion and energy. The eight-month-old I can still kind of contain and say, "No, you're coming along with me now."
Oh, absolutely. I totally get that. Totally get that. So I wanted to talk about the issues, you know, again, this is a second round of elections, special elections, because the town council seat opened up. You've had the opportunity to watch the other videos. You kind of know how this is gonna go. You know, I basically polled folks on Facebook and said, "What's the stuff you care about?" Right? Because there's certain things I care about, but everybody kind of talked about the same things that I cared about and had, and had questions about. And they didn't know, as I did these interviews, learned about as I've been going, which is pretty cool. But I'm still gonna keep some of these questions in there because while something might be a county issue, there is still a way that the town can communicate with the county. Stuff like that. So we can go that route. I didn't put these in any particular order, really. It's just kind of how they came through on Facebook.
All right.
All right. So first one is conflict of interest. There's folks that own businesses that could be privy to information that they could use to their business's benefit down the road. Do you feel, I rang that table like a bell, wow. Do you feel that that is part of the game? Do you think that's something that's fair? A lot of folks were saying it's not right for somebody to be in business and work for the town because they can benefit from it. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I don't really see that. That's not the perspective that I have. But also I think the town does a really incredible job being transparent about information and making that information accessible to people. People just have to know where to go find it, right? So if, if someone is of the opinion that somebody on town council or the mayor is getting information ahead of time, it's either they're getting it at the same time as everybody else, those people just aren't utilizing what's out there to get the information or don't know that that information is readily accessible to them. So I'm not a business owner, so this is like not personally something that I have a lot of information or opinion on, but I personally am of the belief that everybody has access to the same information at the same time.
Do you feel, usually this question comes, for some reason, closer to the end of the questions, but I'm gonna ask it now because I feel like it's pertinent. Do you feel like there's a way the town could be better at really blasting information out there? Like on something like that, where if you're, if you're in and active often, right? You know about it. But say somebody like me, I see all the updates when there's an accident on the road, right? But I don't see like, "Hey, we're looking for this" all the time.
I think it's a double-edged sword. I think you're always gonna have people who want more information at their fingertips, but then I also think if there are email blasts going out every week with updates, people are gonna be like, "The town's just sending me too much information too frequently," or "This is too dense. I don't really understand it." And it'll have more questions than it'll have answers. So I do think there are things that could be done to keep folks more engaged in the process. The town does a great job holding town halls in different communities around town. I would like to see those better attended, and I don't know if folks just don't know that they're happening or the times and locations don't work for their schedules or what the situation is there. But I know that the town takes a lot of steps to make sure that people can be engaged and involved. It's just a matter of removing the barriers that may be in place for the people to access that information.
Term limits was another issue that came up. Do you feel like if you are, you know, you're, you're in the game here locally for 10-plus years, you can start really making things work the way you want them to work? Is that fair? Should there just be a set number of years that you do what you think you should be able to do in those years? And then you give it to somebody else?
I think at a local level, term limits is harder to apply because people like knowing who's running their town. They like having that personal connection, right? And the longer that you're in these positions of power, the more connections you can make to the folks in town and the bigger the impact is, right? You can't just, I'm not just gonna come onto town council in March and by June, start implementing change. That's not how the process works. A lot of these plans have already been in place a year, five years, 10 years, right? So in order for somebody new to come into town council and really get the impact that they seek, they'll have to be around for a little bit. And I truly think that if voters have a problem with the people who are running their town, they ultimately have a say at the ballot box. So I think at a local level, it's a lot harder to really have that term limits conversation.
Infrastructure, big one here. Break it down. Town's growing super fast. It's not slowing down by any means. It's even, not even projected to. You know, we have land issues, where, where are we building homes, traffic infrastructure issues, and then school issues. I'm gonna go through each one separately. First, I'll start out with housing. And I've, I've learned over the course of these interviews that there's different types of affordable housing. You know, I mentioned yesterday, when Cypress Ridge started over on 170, that was called affordable housing. Like it was, you know, affordable housing for the common people. But then there's also like subsidized or Section 8, for example, affordable housing. Where, coming from New Jersey, as that's where I'm from as well, we have towns where even if it's not a very big town, you have all these different types of housing available, and that's what we're used to. But then sometimes we come to a town like this and like, "Well, we need this and we need that." But maybe that's just not the way it's supposed to go, is what I might be learning. So going with that, I have two definitions of affordable housing here. Affordable housing is housing that a household can pay for while still having money left over for other necessities like food, transportation, and healthcare. That means what's considered affordable depends on a household's income. The federal government typically defines house, housing as affordable when it consumes no more than 30% of a household's income. With that said, with the high interest rates and inflation and the high demand and low supply for our area, is affordable housing even possible by that definition? And I will, that was my original question, and I'll put the little asterisks there on either level.
Yeah, yeah. I think the piece in that first definition, have money left over, right? Like paying your mortgage or paying your rent should not be taking your entire paycheck. You need to be able to afford your groceries or your childcare, right? So to me, affordable living doesn't just look at the housing opportunities, right? Like you said Cypress Ridge started as affordable. Maybe it was affordable at the time, but now with the, the boom and people coming in and the, the demand, right? We can, those prices are going up, maybe higher than anyone ever anticipated the houses specifically over there to be. But I think a lot of it also comes down to community education, voter education, right? When we talk about like Project 8 or Section 8 housing, I think there's a stigma that comes with that, right? We're not talking about putting up high-rise apartments or, or inviting a transient community to come in and out of our town. When I talk about affordable housing, I simply mean the people who work in Bluffton need to be able to afford to live in Bluffton. And however the town needs to put in grant applications or, or get creative and thinking outside the box and supporting those folks is really important to me. Because this town was here long before me and will be here long after me. And I want to make sure the folks that have helped make this town as special as it is can continue to afford to live here and not just spend their entire paycheck on their home. They can continue to give back to our community through other economic means.
Okay. That grant idea that you just said, I haven't heard that yet. Have you, with any of the, any of the other candidates that you've worked with in your career, have you implemented that or spoke, had that on any of their other platforms? Like, how would that work?
No, I haven't. And you know, it's something that I have only heard other people mention and have started doing some research myself, but there are, there are organizations out there. Habitat for Humanity comes to mind, but I'm sure there are more than that, that can partner with you, that you can say, you know, "We're working specifically to make sure our teachers, right, can live here in Bluffton." As a former educator, that's something near and dear to my heart. Are there, are there teacher housing organizations that we can bring into Bluffton? Maybe they can do, you know, a survey, give their, give their input of, you know, "There's some land over here by some of your schools that we can build some affordable housing for your, for your teachers." There, there are organizations that already exist that do the work. We don't need to recreate the wheel here. We need to be working smarter, not harder, because we're already a little bit behind the eight ball. So really looking forward to learning more about the organizations that already exist and how the town of Bluffton can better partner with those organizations so we can make the impact that we're looking for.
Okay. Roads, something that we've learned over time is a more a county situation, but like I said, Bluffton as a town can interact and maybe sway the, the county and help move things a little better here. We have a lot of, a lot of accidents on the road. There's a lot of congestion. I've also learned through a few meetings that the town has had that it's not always about the roads being overpopulated, but a lack of commercial opportunities in different areas. Do you know what I mean?
Right. There's more people on the road trying to get across town to access what they need as opposed to having it right in their neighborhood.
Yeah, and that's something that, again, like doing these interviews, being in a couple meetings, I've learned like, "Oh, so it's not really that we have a massive traffic problem." It's that we actually don't have enough services in all these different areas, which would bring down the traffic.
I agree.
Although everybody going to the island, we're still gonna hit some traffic.
One way on, one way off. You're always gonna run into that.
Exactly. Do you feel like, what do you feel like the town could do then in order to help alleviate that traffic, whether it was through road improvement or, you know, bringing more commercial in the right areas?
Yeah, so to answer the road question, right, majority of our roads are not owned by the town. We've learned this. They're county and state. But those partnerships exist. Those avenues for communication are able to be opened. Maybe they need to be bigger. Maybe we need to be doing more in communication with the county and the state to, to say, you know, "This is what we're hearing from the folks on the ground who are being impacted by this." Relaying that information. Because if you don't drive on these roads, maybe you don't really know the reality that we're, that we're facing. But you know, I was here, the, the police station had a meeting about a month or so ago with, with the county about what they're gonna do about 170 and 46. It's a great opportunity for people who want information to get that information, can voice their opinions. Those listening tours along the way, I think are gonna help shape whatever the ultimate decision is. But that's part of that town and county partnership that I'm talking about. Making sure that if people have concerns or opinions on the issue, they have the opportunity to, to bring them where they, where they are able to have an impact, right? Town council ultimately isn't gonna have that impact, but we can open that door for other folks. But when it comes to commercial, to me, that goes back to the intentional infrastructure that we create as a town. So we know that there's housing, but a certain amount of the land that has been zoned in these planned unit developments is for commercial. Those pieces, we haven't really seen the full impact of yet because the housing is obviously at a higher, higher demand. But I think as we start to see that commercial piece level off with the housing piece, we will start to see some of that alleviation. We won't have people trying to go from New Riverside over to Old Town, you know, when everyone else is trying to get to school to get to a doctor's appointment before they have to get to work that day, right? Changing the patterns and the time periods that people are traveling on the road. We know that kids are going to school between this time of day. We know that kids are coming home from school between this type of, time of day. So how can we make sure that during those times of days, the people who are retired, who don't need to be out on the roads during those times, have what they need in their communities, that they aren't adding to that traffic flow? That buses and parents can get their kids to and from school safely? There's no stoppage on the road that then people are sitting in for hours at a time? So I think as we start to see those unit developments level off, we will start to see inherently a solution to that problem. But being intentional in some of those decisions, I think is gonna be important to seeing an impact.
I haven't asked this question yet, but as you were saying, it made me kind of think of like a blow-off valve to let off some pressure, right? Do you feel like of any of those things, there is actually a blow-off valve? Or like, if we just fix this one thing, it would help alleviate a lot of other things?
Every single voter that I have spoken to is extremely concerned about traffic safety. Like, they all have a different opinion on how it should be resolved, but every single person is like, "There are so many accidents on our road every day." Some people are like, "I'm scared to drive at certain times of day," right? And that's not the Bluffton we know and love. We, we all chose to come to Bluffton because we loved the vibe here, and that vibe was not accidents on the road. So I don't know that town council has the solution for that problem, but I'm certainly hearing it and want to be part of the solution wherever that decision's being made.
Gotcha. Fair enough. First responders. A lot of folks said there's not enough law enforcement. This actually ties in really well because that would help with the, the safety angle. A lot of folks have said they're, they're worried there's not enough law enforcement and a first responder presence and believe it's linked to pay. What are your thoughts on the current state of our first responders and do we need improvement in those areas?
Well, I think that our police chief has done a fantastic job. I have had the chance to sit down with him. I see him at almost every community event that I go to. So he's not just here to keep our town safe. He's here really, he's a member of the community. And I think the work that he does is reflective of that. So definitely want to give him a shout out. Obviously, pay for first responders could always be improved. And I know that they did a pay study. They're looking into ways to, to improve that along with, you know, cost of living and, and all of those things. However, we have vacancies at the police department that can't be filled right now. And I hear folks saying, "Oh, well, we need to expand the budget in town to offer five more police positions so that we can have more people on the roads." Would love to be able to do that. However, we're not filling the vacancies that we currently have. So instead of having four vacancies, we add five more positions. Now we have nine vacancies. That doesn't look good on the town either. So really, I think the, the pay study that the department is doing and, and looking at some of that affordable living and the intentional infrastructure that we're creating, all will kind of circle around and solve some of these problems cohesively together.
Okay. I'm gonna go a little deeper here. Tell me about the vacancies. Is it because we can't fill the seats? Is it, they are just open? What are the vacancies?
I'm not entirely sure. I didn't really get into that in depth with the chief. They have created some positions within the police department that aren't just officer positions. They have like a, a social worker, a person who helps with maybe some violent situations kind of de-escalate, right? And, and train the other officers in the department. But certainly would love to work with Chief, Chief Bappquitz to make sure that we can get those filled sooner rather than later.
Okay, yeah, because that's, that seems to be the point of that question, right? Is boils down to vacancies. Is it because we're not paying enough, right? Is it, nobody knows it's there? Everybody wants to make more. You know, is it a standard thing?
But it comes down to respect too, you know? People, people stay where they, where they feel respected. And police officers, you know, on a national level have certainly received a lot of flack in the, in the last handful of years. And I'm very lucky and fortunate to say that Bluffton is not one of those places. So maybe it's recruiting folks from other, other places to say, "Hey, you may not feel supported in your community where you're from, but here in Bluffton, we have all of these great opportunities to support our police department." How they get involved in our community. We'd love, we'd love to welcome you here and fill some of those spots.
Okay, cool. Schools, great topic for you. Hottest topic, I believe, out of all the questions. They're maxed out. Lot of, probably a lot of vacancies there. I'll put it that way for teachers. We, we have a lot of needs, you know? We need a lot of help in this area. What do you think the answer is to get in the right balance of schools and the districts and, and the supporting staff and the, the right folks to either move here or drive here to help support our school district?
So shout out to Beaufort County School System for understanding the growth of Bluffton and really putting that in the forethought of some of their planning with the referendum that was just on the ballot in November. They see that, they know that it's a reality. They're feeling what we're feeling. I think partially that has to do with Superintendent Rodriguez living here in Bluffton. It's in his backyard. He, he knows it. It's not some abstract concept.
He's feeling the pain too.
Exactly, exactly. You know, his kids go to public school here. He, he experiences it. That to say, going back to what I said about the police officers, it's a matter of respect, right? Educators are professionals who have gone to school, some for multiple master's degrees like myself, but don't have the, the respect of others to do the job that they were hired to do, right? This is something I could go on about all day and can get very passionate about, but
Get passionate.
Teachers are there because they want to help kids. And we have to inherently trust those teachers that they are doing what they believe is in the best interest of kids. The second we lose sight of that, teachers start to feel undercut, undermined, disenfranchised, right? They're not gonna, they're not gonna stay in an environment like that. Ultimately, I left the classroom because it was not great for my mental health anymore. When I became a new mom, I wasn't, wasn't able to come home from school every day and let what happened at school stay at school in order to be a good parent at home, right? So, and that, maybe that's a personal problem, you know? Maybe there's some stuff I need to work on there, but I don't think I'm alone in that regard. There's definitely a cultural attack on teachers that we need to make sure we're turning the tide on. Bluffton is a town of great respect. People from all different backgrounds and walk of life come here because we value each other. We value the town. We value the beautiful environment that Bluffton has. So we need to make sure that that carries over to continue to show that respect and appreciation for our teachers. So they're not just hearing what's happening in the news, having, you know, the one squeaky wheel ruin it for everybody else. There are so many good people who love and support our teachers that we just need to be a little bit louder in showing them that love and support, and hopefully then they'll end up staying or, or coming here from other places.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. Donut holes.
Yeah.
You familiar?
I am. I've learned a lot about them.
Yeah, me too. I, I moved to the Westbury Park and then I went to vote and then I realized there's certain things you can't vote on. And I was like, thought I was getting scammed, right? You just, you don't know.
Right. It's one of the questions somebody asks when they move into town.
Yeah, exactly. Which maybe it should be one of those things a realtor has to be like, "By the way, you live in Bluffton, but you don't live in Bluffton."
Right. Your mailing address says Bluffton, but you are not in the municipal limits. Yeah, I have learned a lot over the last two months about these donut holes.
Yeah, it's pretty interesting overall. There, there's quite a few within our area. And if this is your first time watching a donut hole, it's basically we have the municipal town limits of Bluffton. And inside of Bluffton, there are spaces that are Beaufort County but not Bluffton. My example of Westbury Park was one of them. There's quite a few of them. I think there's a few right up around here.
Yeah, actually that whole side of the road.
Yeah, which is, I mean, we are in Bluffton.
Yeah.
And they're not. So they can't make a decision based off of either Emily, correct?
Correct.
It's kind of weird, you know?
They may have an opinion, but they don't get to cast their ballot, right?
And, and what anybody does in town council or the mayor affects the way they live.
Absolutely.
So that's where, this is my personal input. That's where I think it's a little wonky where how can you live inside of something and be controlled by something, but then not have a say?
And they benefit from all of our parks and all of our public service, you know? Like, that's, I'm glad that they get to do that, you know? But I'm sure I would want to have an opinion about that if I lived there.
I don't even mind the, the, the use thing. That's secondary. Somebody could come from Savannah and visit, right?
Oh, yeah. No, it doesn't bother me at all. I'm happy that they get to.
For sure. But it's just weird to me. It's just one of those things, I find it very weird. So that being said, do you feel like if we eliminated that, it would help Bluffton in any way? Would it be more fair to those folks that they can help have a say here? Do you think it's, maybe there's a more pros to it to not be? Because you don't have to pay taxes, for example, Bluffton taxes. Do you think, what's your thoughts on that?
But then they get frustrated because they want to have a say in what's happening in town.
Right.
I don't, I don't know if everybody knows the reason why we have donut holes. And that's something that I've learned along this process.
You want to give us like the quick elevator pitch?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So like, you have to apply for annexation to the town when your, when your developer was developing your neighborhood and it had to have been approved ahead of time. And if it wasn't, the only way to change that is either have every single person in your neighborhood sign a petition to say, "Yes, we want to be annexed into town." And the odds of having 100% of people agree to anything is
It has to be 100?
Yes.
Oh, wow, that's tough.
Right. Or it can go, that community could put it on like a voter referendum and they could, it could be voted on. And I think that's what happened in the Simmondsville Buck Island area before I was here. But they were previously a donut hole and now they're not. So all of that to say, there are ways for donut holes to not become donut holes, but it's a, it's a tedious kind of bureaucratic process. People are like, is, you know, it's a lot of work. Is it worth it in the long run? I don't ultimately know. I would have to talk with people in the donut holes about how they feel about it. Because if they're happy being a donut hole, then who am I to come in and say, "Well, you need to be in town." And there might be some communities who are perfectly fine with that. There may be other communities who say, "I wish, you know, I had a say in this." And that's where I think it's important for them to know, there, there, there are opportunities should your entire community agree with you to make that a reality. But I guess it would depend on each donut hole.
Yeah, fair enough. So you don't really see it as an overall issue?
No, I think people are frustrated about it, but I think it's because they're, they don't know ahead of time. They go to, you know, November, they went to go vote. They thought they were voting for mayor, town council, and school board referendum. And they showed up and it was just school board referendum. And they were like, "Well, what's that about?" They didn't know they were in a donut hole until they showed up. It's not like there's a sign when you enter one of the neighborhoods, "You are now outside of Bluffton."
Welcome to Beaufort County.
Right, exactly. So I think just like making sure that folks know.
It's funny because you can't even say it's what makes Bluffton Bluffton because it's not Bluffton.
Right. But those people are also part of our Bluffton culture. Even though they don't get considered, yeah, I know. I know. It is, I, I haven't experienced that anywhere else that I've lived. It is a nuance of Bluffton.
Neither have I.
Or I guess Beaufort County.
Beaufort County. Drugs, on a more serious topic, is another one that came up. And I believe it ties in with the infrastructure because it's, it's a big part of the community. Specifically, everything seems to be getting laced with fentanyl. I believe it is actually like an attack on our country because it's usually coming, coming in from different borders, whether it's from Mexico or whether it's from our ports on, on both sides of the coasts. It's being shipped in. A lot of, most of it's not being made here. So to me, that's, there's something going on there. A born and raised local woman spoke up in one of these Facebook groups. She is now a, nearly a decade clean. And she's very active in the rehab community. And I'll quote her here. "It's really hard for someone to get in the doors of detox and treatment here in the Low Country without driving two-plus hours." And this is, and this issue is not slowing down. She says, "The coroner's office has seen a massive spike since June." I don't have those stats, but let's assume that's true. And I'll paraphrase on her question. "How can you help gap the road to recovery of drug addiction and alcohol? Offer more Narcan training, help bring resources to light that people don't even know exists? And, which I think is very important, help the community become aware of the positive outcomes that come from helping people that want to change and have changed."
Absolutely. I love this question. So my mom used to work in an addiction rehab facility treatment for, for women in the town where they live. So I have seen firsthand the impact that those facilities have on saving people's lives and changing people's lives for the better. And so, I, I don't have any reason to believe that anything she said is not true.
For sure.
It's a shame people shouldn't have to be driving two-and-a-half hours to get what they need.
Thanks for battling through the rain.
Of course, of course. No, people shouldn't have to be driving two-and-a-half hours. That is, if it's a communal need, they should be able to access it within the community where they live. And again, I think that goes back to educating people about the need and removing the stigma. People who are in need of treatment should be met with the utmost empathy. And I fear that that's not always the case. People bring in their own personal opinions to the matter and, and have that impact there. "Oh, we don't need to have this because, you know, they shouldn't have been using it anyway." The reality is, they did, right? There's nothing, I can't, I can't do anything about the drugs coming in or things being laced with. That's outside of my control. What is inside of my control is how we as a community address that. And whether that's developing programs within town, having monthly opportunities for folks, you know, within town hall. I don't, I don't know that that does or does not exist, but would love to be able to expand if it does. The Narcan training to me is so personally important because I was, I was trained through my mom's work and, and know the, the importance and life-saving, you know? Any single person could save somebody's life once they're Narcan trained.
For sure.
And, you know, we have programs that run through our libraries on a pretty regular basis, but making those, one, more frequent, two, in different locations, three, at different times of day. The last one, I believe, was in the middle of the day, working folks weren't able, weren't able to go. So again, removing barriers that exist for people like you and me to go do what we need to do, to be able to be the community members and supporters that these folks need, should they be in a crisis situation. But then also in a leadership role on town council, expanding access, whether that's using the resources that are already available to us to allow folks to join us in community or to bring community to them if that's what they need. They shouldn't have to be driving two and a half hours to get what they need, that's not helpful.
I agree, I agree. I feel like it dropped five degrees too in that last question.
My hands are pretty cold.
I promise, we're almost done.
I'm gonna just sit on them for a little bit.
Yeah, you're good. You know, to you, is there anything we haven't touched on that maybe you're running on your platform? Any extra details you'd want the folks to know?
Yeah, I think, so the three pieces of my platform started as three individual pieces and as I've gone through this process, I've realized how interconnected they all are. And that's intentional infrastructure, which we talked about, commercial, roads, making sure that our small business owners are able to stay where they're renting or owning, they're not being priced out so we can continue to support their fantastic business that they provide us. Environmental protections, we all love our May River, we love this Low Country life. We have, we have that green space initiative that came through, making sure that we're utilizing everything within our ability with it, that's on our, in our purview to make sure we're really protecting and preserving our, our environment. And that is impacted by the amount of development that we do, right? The more development we do without pervious surfaces, the more runoff we have going into our May River. So as we continue to develop, keeping that environmental piece in the forefront to say, let's make sure that our developers are utilizing pervious surfaces. Let's make sure that we're maintaining trees that are above a certain age or we're not just coming in and wiping down all the trees as we're putting up a new development, right? Originally, two separate pieces of a platform that I've realized along the way are interconnected. And then the last piece that we talked about is affordable living. And to me, that means more than just being able to afford your home, it means being able to have access to the medical treatments that you need. As a, as a parent whose kids were born here, I was able to just walk right into my pediatrician's office because my kids were born here. But people who are moving here, who have kids, are having a hard time finding a medical practice that's accepting new patients. That's unacceptable in a town that's as fantastic as Bluffton, right? We need to be, we need to be intentional in some of those decisions that are being made. And we know that childcare access is very similar to that of the medical access. You know, I waited a year to get my, my daughter into daycare and I know I'm not alone in that. And so looking at some creative solutions that the town can use to implement more opportunities for families because people who work in Bluffton need to be able to have their kids cared for while they're working, right? And so if we want them to continue to provide for our town and contribute to our town, we need to be able to, to give it back to them where they need it as well.
Big time agree on that note. Anything else?
I just, I'm really excited about the opportunity to have run mainly because I just learned so much along the way. Every single person I've spoken to in any community around town has just reinforced why Bluffton is so great. Why so many folks are moving here is because the people who have built this town have made it so fantastic. And it is so important to me that all of those people and all of those voices and what they need in town are represented. And I look forward to the challenge of being able to do that for them on town council.
Very good, voting day, when is it?
February 13th.
Get out, vote, February 13th, early voting starts.
Next Monday, the 29th and goes till the 9th. It runs 8:30 to 5:00 PM at the Bluffton Rec Center on Ulmer Road.
Very good, Emily, thank you so much for joining me on this soggy Tuesday.
This was not what I expected when I picked this spot, but I think it gave it a unique vibe.
Yeah, look, everyone has been different and I didn't ask, one important question I'm gonna ask at the end here, why did you choose this area?
Two reasons. One, because on February 10th, I'm holding a campaign event here to provide food to folks who need it. Open community space, lots of businesses, the playgrounds here, right, there may be some families. So wanted to highlight that, so appreciate you asking the question. Gonna be using this spot, but also the playgrounds in Bluffton really saved me. When I had my second daughter and I was two under two in the heat of the summer and my husband had to go back to work before my older one started daycare, the parks in this town are what made it doable each and every day. So I wanted to be able to highlight one of our fantastic parks, we have so many. I'm so excited for the new one coming at the new Riverside Park, all the expansion that they're doing over at Oscar Fraser and New Boys. I love our town parks, I, my family is so thankful for them, I am so thankful for them. So just wanted to be able to, to highlight them in this interview.
Absolutely, and I will say, and I have no affiliation, but shout out to Rita's Water Ice because when it's the heat of the summer.
Oh my gosh, how smart for them to have opens right there, right?
Great, helps you stay cooled down, shout out to Rita's, thank you again so much. Let's go get dry, J C, thanks for sitting out in the rain. Folks, thanks for joining us, make sure you get out and vote.
February 13th.
Early voting starts.
January 29th.
Thank you so much, thanks for joining us on the Bluffton Buzz, we'll see you soon.